Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is the invocation, Commissioner Sidney McNeil.
Thank you, and I have asked our fire chief, Casey Wright, please come and give that to us.
Thank you. Good evening. Let us pray. Father, we thank you again this day. We thank you, dear God, for the opportunity to serve our community. We thank you, Father, for the help and your gifts. We ask, Father, that you touch those standing in that house, you touch this thing. What I ask, God, you be in the midst of this meeting, whether you guide our hearts, God, you guide our tongues. Father, you level us, to lead us, as you have led us, Lord, we love you. We thank you, Father, for all that you've done. We praise you, dear God, for all that you're going to do, in your precious and holy and blessed things.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to stand and face the flag, good deal. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I would ask that, under the approval of the order of the agenda, could we insert before the consent agenda, the recognition of our trike stars, so that they can get up and get up out of here?
Move to approve.
So trike is gonna come after the order of the approval of the agenda. Okay? We're good?
Good.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda. At this time, I entertain a motion. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of our trike superstars, the ambassadors for the City of Douglas and Coffee County Parks and Recreation.
And it's really nice on the mission.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank Coach Graham, who certainly come up first, Coach Ryan Graham, who do it many, many years. You know, it's one of our most successful programs. Of course, swim, swim, then track, so baseball, softball, trying to catch up with that, but certainly Coach Graham has did a tremendous job at our program. We had fourteen participants in state track. We had two state champions and three runners-up, three runners-up out of that group. We have several kids to place, but after saying that, I turn it over to Coach Graham and acknowledge these kids and all participants, if please come up, or kids.
Good Lord, you make us noise.
I love you, one of the table. I thank you all for the table.
This is what I have here out of the four teams. I have some cup of brandy. Come on up, everybody, get on up. There you go. Hello, coach. Hello, coach.
So proud of you all.
Listen, one of them, Coach, I got two missing, but I told everybody, say the good Lord this year, from what we went through to get here, it was harder than what we thought it was gonna be, but it was quick. But they were very amazing kids. They were just, and they were ready to go through it. I got some first-time runners-up here, first time ever showing up this thing. Another, the girl right here, Teresa White. All right. I'm gonna go. I don't wanna mess this.
Okay.
Very young, St. She was the first time tape runs up in the shop. She's not here, she's out of town, but all these kids paid better than the tape. She was the second place runner-up, Mrs. Kennedy. Step right up, Kennedy, let's see, let's run out. Hey. She got stuck over here with you and with the manager, number four in the nation.
All right.
I had a little surrender right here, first year runner-up. They were kinda scared by their first time, even smaller kids, it's their first time, they wanted to back out of there, but I said, okay, you die, and then I can get you two things. You got a thousand dollars down, but you went to the dump, get on the fourth place. That's a regular right here, I tell you. He ready, he gonna be here all the time. And he does very good. He got a little nervous down in this year, but I bet he still did that, but he got a little nervous. He shouldn't be in that, he should've been in the first place. But he ended up being the third, and when he ran that tape. Y'all know about that scary baby. He got out of there, he's probably glad, or too many people. I said, if you die, then you can run. He died, and he got the kid, he didn't run away, but he ended up in third place. There's a new runner right here. I lost a lot over, and I thought it was new, this DJ right here. Very good, he gonna be quick and swift. Now, he got down there, he, he was just scared, I think he more careful than everything. I thought, you looking at six or three teams? I think we end up in eighteen, ten, about six or three teams, fourteen kids.
Wow.
Just fourteen kids, man, thank you, please. That's another one of my little scary babies. She cried, too. You, you beat that up a minute, and she pulled out the most she can, and she got seven and one, eighty-nine.
All right.
Man, keep that, she's just a regular, too, y'all. Now, when she in Douglas, she gonna be a regular. And she did good, she made a tape, and she ended up the second place runner. That's the first time, but he ain't scared of nothing. I hate to get him so down, but he ready to run and do more than that. I think he, he gonna be very good for the city of Douglas. He got, he quick with his feet, and I think he gonna accomplish something, if he stay with it. And he end up, he fucked that, he end up in eighth place, but he fucked that first night, and he gonna be good. I like to say my wife, she gave it opportunity to all, it wasn't her, it was me. My father right there, she ain't the coach, but she right here with it all the way up. I have a lot of rumors out there that Kennedy, but that should've been her. It gonna get done, I told everybody. I got some news, somebody in the house, I think they're gonna get done, boy, they just paid the gun, they gonna get it.
Ms. Georgia.
I'm not a strike, I come to Dallas, baby, from where we used to be. And we filled up, oh, too high, my night though, a grass track, we stayed out, this ain't never been there, thankful, and I won't see that fact, they talking out. So I'm pushing all these young kids, I'm trying to push, and don't let them down, just follow your kids. The best thing is just follow your kids. We don't get through this, if you follow your kid, you'll make the kid better. I appreciate it all, Jeff, let them out of here. I wanna thank everybody. This is what I have, right here, city of Douglas, best.
Good job.
Just for the record, just in Florida, we had five teams qualify for state softball.
Oh, five, oh, you ready?
Five, five teams. Tomorrow, it's possible, we're gonna have two more baseball teams qualify for state softball.
That's what I mean.
We ready for transfer.
Can you get your shoes this morning?
I was gonna just grab this out of the way. You want me to move it up, or just move?
And Commissioner Neil?
I wish my children's protection, man.
Oh, yeah. Always.
All the cheese, not some bitches.
Thank you. I want to say something, please. I want to say thank you, okay? I want to say thank you for getting over your fears and getting out there and running and representing Douglas Coffee County Parks and Recreation. I said a million times, our children are our greatest ambassadors for our community. When you go out there and participate, it does us good. If anybody knows, I'm very passionate about parks and recreation. This is my baby. I, I, I love our kids being able to compete, so time to get ready to make some transfers. Thank you all, appreciate you all. Listen to that noise, baby, that's success right there. That's success. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we ask the city manager to say what's on the consent agenda, excuse me. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, we have four items coming over on the consent agenda. Item one will be the approval of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one budget meeting minutes, and the May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting meeting minutes. Second item coming over was item five from the work session, approval of the vacant prison labor detail contracts. The third item is item seven, which is the approval of the road closure for Juneteenth celebration. And then item four is the eight, number, item eight from the work session, approval of the fee for the alcoholic beverage catering license. Those are the four items.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. At this time, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda items.
Send it.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items brought forward for discussion. Again, we'll turn it over to our city manager. Mr. City Manager, please lead us through it.
All right, we have five items coming over, one item's already been addressed, recognition of the state track team. So the first item coming over will be item three, discuss the fee waiver request for the usage of Central Square Complex, Stevie Young.
Let me put it back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir. So Central Square Complex wants to get around, so I'll talk to this man, give some information on the athletic teams. But of course, I came earlier on behalf of the staff that we recommend that, that fees not be waived for the use of Central Square Complex, the conservative services that pay, that pay that as well, a little tour, the twenty-one, some change in using. But obviously, I'm here to assist any group, any organization. I understand there might have been a tender offer, a solution earlier, if that's okay with Mayor and Commissioner. I'm obviously fine with that right there, with the four hundred off, or the total price of that work of the staff.
So, is there anything other that we want to discuss, other than the four hundred dollars off? I think Commissioner Pearson had an alternative. Commissioner Pierce?
Well, I mentioned about them getting two gyms, that they could use less facilities than what they requested, you know, that's what I was suggesting, so, but I think, Ms. Card, did she leave?
She agreed to the four hundred dollars off, and they gotta pay the rest.
Okay, so, I mean, so she'll have, they'll have all the facilities, is that what y'all are saying?
Yes, and she just get four hundred dollars off the total.
That's what she agreed to.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr. City Manager?
Next item is item six, hold a public hearing for the FY twenty-two budget.
In connection with the FY twenty-two budget, we must conduct a public hearing. If anyone here tonight wishes to come and make a comment on this proposed budget, amount of ninety-seven million, seven thousand, forty-five dollars, please come to the podium and state your name and whatever comment you may have. Apparently, there is no one else who can plead public duty, you will take action on this, make a living.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Next item?
Next item is item, item nine, hold a public hearing for happy one-twenty-one alcoholic beverage license application. It's worth God's, slay it, bro.
All right, if there's anyone here tonight who has a comment, a public comment for the happy one-twenty-one alcoholic beverage license application, please come to the podium and state whatever comment you may have. Apparently, there is no one, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Ready for action?
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license.
So move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
The next item is a public hearing for ESAI sixteen twenty-sixteen alcoholic beverage license application. If anyone here tonight who has a comment on this proposed alcoholic beverage license application, please come forward and state whatever comment you may have. Apparently, there's no one, Mr. Mayor, ready for action?
Thank you very much. At this time, I entertain a motion for the alcoholic beverage license, as presented before.
So move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I didn't hear any ayes down here. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. City Manager?
All right, next item is item twelve from the work session, discuss the Affordable Care Act and Presidential Biden's executive order, reason for, Commissioner Pearson?
I'm gonna try to make it to the podium.
Good evening.
As I stated earlier during the work session, there is a group of black business owners, Commissioner Taylor, give me that red paper, please. Who have met here in Douglas, Georgia. I'm sorry, y'all, bear with me. It's nothing but a great writing. Yes, this is, thank you so much. And this group, known as Better Coffee on the Move, are here to submit a proposal to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner. And I will read this into the record, as to what has been, what is being submitted. Be it known, that several people of color within the City of Douglas Coffee County, comprised of over fifteen organizations, have organized to form Black Coffee on the Move Coalition. Be it further known, that this coalition is made up of various faith-based organizations, small businesses, nonprofit organizations, grassroots organizations, et cetera. We are hereby officially entering into the City of Douglas, Georgia official minutes and meeting of our request and proposal to receive at least fifty percent of the designated monies for people of color designated through President Joseph Biden's Executive Order thirteen-nine-eighty-five and the American Rescue Plan. Here with or attached are official statistics, which support the fact that these monies are needed to improve underserved impoverished communities, such as the conditions of people of color in Douglas, Georgia. Respectfully submitted, Olivia Pearson, serving in my capacity as Georgia State African-American Chamber Commerce Political Liaison, and Montisha Paul, spokesperson for Black Coffee on the Move. Now, I know that, Mr., and I'm gonna go ahead and pass this on to our city clerk, for her to enter to the record, I know our city manager has told us that the American Rescue Plan is the venue in which monies will be coming, and not through President Biden's executive order. And that's fine and well, but the two ought to work, this work together. In that executive order dated January twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, President Biden states, "It is therefore a policy of my administration that the federal government should pursue a comprehensive approach to advancing equity for all, including people of color and others who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality." Then, when I go to the American Rescue Plan, it states, "The COVID-nineteen pandemic and corresponding economic crisis have undermined the health and economic well-being of American workers. Millions of Americans, many of whom are people of color, immigrants and low-wage workers. More than nine point five million workers have lost their jobs in the wake of COVID-nineteen. American Rescue Plan will change the course of the pandemic and deliver immediate relief for American workers." Now, this American Rescue Plan goes on and on and on, and it goes into detail as to the various ways these monies are to be used. Deliver immediate direct relief to families bearing the brunt of the crisis. As a result of COVID-nineteen crisis, millions of Americans are hurting through no fault of their own. More than ten million Americans are unemployed, four million have been out of work for half a year alone. The job crisis is particularly severe in communities of color, where one in black workers and one in eleven Latino workers are unemployed." I'm only saying that and those numbers to get to the point of where various issues are addressed. To give working families fourteen hundred dollars per person, it goes further on to say, help struggling household, households keep a roof over their heads, so meaning to help people from being evicted. Ensure that families hit hard by the economic crisis won't face eviction or foreclosure. Help renters and small landlords make ends meet. All of the things that's outlined, and Ms. Juanetta, I'm gonna give you a copy of this pages eleven through nineteen, because it also says on page nineteen, provide small businesses with funding they need to reopen and rebuild, provide grants for more than one million of the hardest-hit small businesses, leverage thirty-five billion dollars in government funds into one hundred and seventy-five billion dollars in additional small business lending and investments. So those four categories you called out, Mr. Davis, it goes broader than that. So therefore, therefore, I want it clear, I want it clear, that the black community of Coffee County, Douglas, we are here because of the racial disparities that goes on here, not just here, but everywhere, because according to research, you asked the question, why are high middle-income white families so much wealthier than black families with the same incomes? All of this matters because wealth confers benefits that go beyond those that come with family income. Okay, I'm about done. Wealth is the sum of resources available to a household at a point in time. As such, it is clearly influenced by the income of a household, but the two are not perfectly correlated. Summing it all up, a close examination of wealth in the United States finds evidence of staggering racial disparities. At one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, the net worth of a typical white family is nearly ten times greater than that of a black family at seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Gaps in wealth between black and white households reveal the effects of accumulated inequality and discrimination, as well as differences in power and opportunity that can be traced back to this nation's inception. The black wealth gap, white, white wealth gap reflects a society that has not and does not afford equality of opportunity to all its citizens. The reason why President Biden implemented the executive order thirteen-nine-eighty-five to make sure these agencies that's getting those billions of dollars do the right thing. We are here tonight to make sure this mayor and council understands that when you get your money, Mr. Turner, when you get it, when you get ready for, before you get ready to finalize everything, we gonna be at the table, okay? That's the message we want to make clear tonight. That's why we're here. Any other questions for me before I take my seat? Thank you. So are we gonna get a motion to take that, to hear, to add us to the table, what, how we gonna proceed? Call it to a motion?
Ask you, Mr. Mayor?
I will entertain a motion. I don't think that you can make the motion of vote, since you're an integral part of the group. So I think that, as I said previously, excuse me, in the work session, I think that once we get the final rules and the actual funds, I think the mayor and council needs to read, and become very studious about that, give it to the city manager and his staff, and we can have some citizen input. I think that's only fair. I am absolutely one hundred percent against giving that group two million dollars. Now, I'm against that one hundred percent, because the bottom line is, the U.S. Treasury has certain accountability measures, and if the City of Douglas receives those funds, ultimately, the City of Douglas is gonna be responsible for the accountability of those funds to the U.S. Treasury.
I don't think that's accurate, sir.
Well, I'm just saying this right here.
The group will have a fiduciary agent to be in charge of those monies.
And that, that agent will be the City of Douglas.
The fiduciary agents will be in charge, will be responsible.
If we get four votes, that agency is gonna be the City of Douglas.
Excuse me?
That agent is gonna be the City of Douglas if this council gets four votes.
Well, I don't know if the City of Douglas can be that fiduciary agent, I'm not sure. But anyway, where we are now, and you said that you don't think that I should vote, but I'm, I'm going to vote.
Okay, that's fine, so make a motion.
So move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
What you got, Mr. Galvin?
Aye.
What you got?
Yeah, I wanna weigh, I wanna, I wanna.
I thought you were voting to give him two million dollars.
No, that's not.
I don't have a clearance on that.
Everybody's gonna be at the table. We, we can have a public meeting about it.
I don't have a clearance on that.
So, so, but there is a motion on the floor, and there is a vote.
Respect the motion, 'cause who made it, who made the motion?
I said I would entertain a motion, and somebody said, I make the motion, and it was second.
Yeah, but it wasn't clear. All right, so I offer the motion that the information I presented be accepted into the record to include Black Coffee on the Move when those funds come down from American Rescue Plan, a, a, a Biden's executive order, wherever they come from. We are at the table, that's the motion.
Okay, there's a motion.
Mayor, so I can understand.
Yes.
Okay, the thirteen nine eighty-five. What she highlights is that the fifteen businesses, Black businesses.
So far.
Uh, that.
Not just businesses now, grassroots, nonprofit, fifteen organizations.
Uh, there, if any money comes from the thirteen nine eighty-five, they want to be part of.
Receiving, sitting at the table, discussing how this money is allocated. That's right, that's it, that's the law. That's it.
Okay, so we have a motion. Did I get a second?
I did.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So that's three, three, in the City of Douglas, it takes four votes. So that item is not approved. So the next item on the agenda? That's it? At this time, I entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Some move.
Second. It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Stand adjourned.